All of our board members. We have all of our board members here and our superintendent, so I'm going to call the July 20th Petaluma City Schools Board of Education meeting to order. And do we have any comments from the public on closed session items?
I will open the chat because there is one person here. Oh, it's open.
Okay, so if you could go ahead and put your first and last name in the chat if you have a comment. We'll hear your comment before we go to the closed session. Matthew, I'll let you decide when to close the chat.
Okay.
Previously Gary's job.
Yeah, that's right. Ace, our Ace Carpetti doesn't look like he, he or she has a comment.
Okay, so we. I'm sorry.
I said, let's go ahead and close the chat.
Okay, so. Let's go ahead and adjourn to closed session and we'll reconvene at six o'clock.
Great, and Ashley, you'll stick around, right?
Yep, I'll stay here.
Okay.
Caitlin, another minute. All right, let's go ahead and reconvene. I'm sure she'll be here in a minute. All right, next item up is adoption and approval of the agenda. Can you get a motion?
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Miss Caitlin, we're approving the agenda right now. All in favor?
Hi.
All right, um, first of our recognitions, reports, and presentations. Actually, first, I want to welcome Superintendent Harris.
Thank you.
First. Meeting as superintendent and welcome Tony.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. So glad to have you and Jason, your new role as morale. And Liz, girl, you're like the senior now.
I don't know how that happened so quickly.
All right, so let's move on to Petaluma People Services presentation.
Hello, I'm Elise Hempel. Welcome, everybody. I'm excited to be here and excited to share. I'm going to introduce Yancy and she's going to talk about our academic mentoring programs.
Everyone, my name is Yancy Haco. I'm Director of Youth Programs at PPSC. I don't know if I can send you the link to the presentation or if I can just share my screen.
You're able to share your screen, Yancy.
Perfect, okay. And so I just wanted to quickly go over our academic mentoring program. We started the pilot in April of 2021. And this is a quote from one of our academic mentees and they shared that I got to bond with my mentor and get the help I needed and I really enjoyed it. And I think at the heart of this was recognition that our young people were struggling, not just with the academic component of their schoolwork, but also just with the socialization aspect. And so this academic mentoring program was really meant to bridge that together. And so the three goals for this were connection and feeling supported for students and just resources, knowledge about additional resources they could access, whether it be through the library, the tutor.com program, or just other ways to tap into that. And the third goal was academic improvement. And so while each academic mentorship was unique, we trained mentors to go through six different components. And the very first thing they would do with students was a check-in. How are you feeling today? Is there anything that's important for me to know before we start a session? The second part was strengthening social emotional learning. And so they always had a grounding exercise, whether it be like a breathing exercise, a movement exercise. So we also gave our academic mentors tools to walk mentees through that. And then we also asked mentees, academic mentees to come in with the goal for the session. So something specific that they wanted to achieve, whether it be, I want to finish my math assignment, or I just want to get organized with all my schoolwork and my missing assignments. And then they would go into the work and we asked academic mentors to kind of really coach them through that. So like, what do you want to do first? What are you going to do next? And just really support the student in walking themselves through that. And then we asked them to do a wrap-up. And this one was a check-in. So how did you feel today's session went? Is there anything you want me to change? Is there anything you would change? And then we closed that with an affirmation and confirmation. So the affirmation was the academic mentor saying, hey, I really liked how, you know, when, when you had that math problem, you tried two different ways to do it. That was great. And then confirming, I'll see you next week for our session. And the commitment was two hours per week. So mentors knew that, academic mentors knew that, and academic mentees knew that as well as the families. So we had for that first initial pilot program, nine volunteers who were trained and ready to go. And we had 12 students that were referred and signed up and did the program. And so we were able to accommodate all 12 students because we had some small group mentoring as well. And these are just some student takeaways. They, they said that asking for help was important. They learned how to make a solid plan that can help me do work. I learned that planning on what to do is very important and setting reminders, being organized is going to help out in the future. Definitely how to create a framework to organize myself and better manage my time. And so again, we were seeing students struggling with just like, I'm overwhelmed, what do I do? And so academic mentors are really key in helping students not only learn strategies in the moment, but strategies that they could take with them moving forward. And as the last thing, next steps. So we're still gathering our quantitative data. We have a great qualitative data. We've got great feedback, not only from our students, but also from the families. That's how their students go through this process. And we'll continue to serve the current cohort into fall of 2021. And the potential for expansion, expansion is dependent on funding and volunteer recruitment. So I just wanted to give you a quick overview of kind of what we've been doing since last semester. And I'll pass it off to Elise as well.
Thanks, Yancy. You know, she's so smooth. She shares a screen. I'm just going to talk to you. I think it's important to know that that academic mentoring actually was a program that they piloted in Sonoma Valley with the elementary school. But based on what we were hearing from, from the educators at Petaluma City Schools is they really wanted it for their older students. And so we had to transition a little and, and the team at, at our, in our youth programs and the sites coordinators and Yancy did an amazing job of creating a program and running with it and really making a difference in young people's lives. So what I'm here to talk to you about is a new program that the city of Petaluma just launched and PPSC is part of the partnership. And it's called the SAFE Program, which is specialized assistance for everyone. And this came about because youth in our community came together in July of 2020, shortly after the George Floyd incident and said, we need a model in Petaluma that's similar to the cahoots model, which is the crisis intervention de-escalation model in Eugene, Oregon. And so the city of Petaluma invested some money into doing some research and really found that, that cahoots model would probably work in Petaluma in part because Petaluma already has pretty much most of the human services centered, centered in one program through Petaluma People Services Center. So they hired a consultant. The consultant came down and met with everybody. I probably met with some of you at the schools to find out really what the needs are with the, with the young people in and the residents in our community. And they, they made some recommendations. And on July 1st, Petaluma People Services Center, along with our partners, the Petaluma Police Department and Petaluma Fire and the city of Petaluma and all of our other community partners that we utilize every day, launched our SAFE Program. The team, many of them graduates from Petaluma City Schools, which makes me happy, makes me proud, came together, did some training and actually launched on Ju-, July 6th was our first day out. They actually drove out of our driveway and responded to the first 911 call that we received, which was pretty amazing that they hadn't even really, their signal hadn't even turned off before they started responding to those calls. And since then, and we have responded to over 60 calls, most of them 911, most of them behavioral health. When we are not doing behavioral health 911 calls to the police department, we're actually outdoing community outreach. And the community outreach includes reaching, working with those who are unhoused in our community, but then also engaging and, and, and touching our community in a way that, that this safe team really can, can do it. Lot of bicultural bilingual employees on, on that team doing, doing what they do best, which is connecting with our community. We had an opportunity and, and I shared it with Liz and that the COPS grant, which usually is the SRO on campus, became available. And so we took a stab of at it and we hope to hear soon of writing it not to have an SRO on campus, but to have a safe team accessible to the school campuses as, as needed. It's pretty, the, the, the response will, will be, and now if, if somebody called 911 from one of the high school campuses or elementary school campuses or any of the campuses, the dispatch would actually make a decision whether it's a behavioral health and they need to send the safe team or whether it needs to be police officers or police and fire to respond. And so they have spent a lot of time training. It's interesting. We've learned so many things. We hired somebody who had been working in the cahoots team and he's come down and, and really kicked us off in a grand manner. And we, we hope that we'll be back at some point to talk to you about additional dollars that we were able to receive so that we can start to introduce the safe team on a regular basis to campus so that, that the students, the educators and even the parents actually start to learn to develop this level of trust with that team that they'll be able to, to, to recognize them. They'll recognize their teal shirts and they'll be able to wave them down and say, I need a little help. And the help is oftentimes referring them to additional services that are available in our community. So that's just a little update on that. You know, we continue to build it out. We continue to see great things. We will probably by the fall of, of 2020, it will be 24 hours a day. Right now it's 10 to 10, 10 to midnight every day, seven days a week. And, and the city of Runner Park is also looking at launching the same model up in Runner Park. The, the beauty of what we have in Petaluma is all the social services are under one roof. So it makes it a little bit easier, but we'll figure out, we'll figure out those bumps. So that's really what we wanted to tell you about some of the work that we're doing. We know that, you know, there's a lot of work for all of you to do. And if you need support from Petaluma People Services Center, please call us. We're able to rally the resources probably better than anybody else. So thank you.
Elise and Yancy, I'm so glad you're here. You're actually saving me an email because I saw the article in the paper, I want to say it was last week, about the safe team. I didn't know if I should email you, the Chief Savano, like who to reach out to. Because I know like when I've called for mental health reasons, every time except for once was I sent a police officer. And every time the kids like freaked out. And so I was just wondering if, if the police department, and I guess you guys plan on responding to those calls instead of an armed officer.
That's right. We respond to those calls and based on the severity, the whole mission of this model is they de-escalate. And then they have a conversation with the person who's having the mental health break and say, say, so, so there's two ways we can do it. You can voluntarily go with us to the CSU or to the ER, or we even drove somebody down to San Francisco because that's where their psychiatrist is. We can take you to where you need to be to get the services voluntarily. That's how we are going to be able to transport. If somebody is having a psychotic break and they cannot de-escalate and they need to be 5150, we actually unfortunately have to call in the, the, the police department to do that. But based on the cahoots model, most people, once they kind of understand and learn that this team is going to gently take you up and not abandon you and you're not having to get handcuffed in the back of the squad car. There's a really, a real strong connection with those individuals with that safe team. And we're already seeing it. You know, it's been a whole variety of different calls we've responded to. But we actually on Sunday responded out of ours jurisdiction with the sheriff because the sheriff called for additional aid with the police department. The police department said, oh, this is a safe team thing. We'll just send the safe team out to the sheriff. So, so our whole mission is de-escalate and get you connected to all of the additional services that we'll be able to see. And we're really looking at how we're going to build kind of what we, what we track and what we don't track and what we need. So if the school says we want to track families and students and we want to just get kind of raw numbers on how many calls you're getting that involve young people in our community, we can't necessarily identify what school they're coming from, but we can identify them as a youth who, who reached out for services and then be able to hopefully develop a relationship so that we can make internal referrals to your counseling team on, on campus. And then at the same time, those external referrals to, you know, Petaluma People Services Counseling Clinic or even Mentor Me if, if it's a youth. And if it's a family member, then you know, our, our net is much wider and who we can serve with those family members. So we hope to continue to do that.
Elise, so how get, so a 911 call goes into the police station and then they refer it to the safe group? Or how does that work?
So, so. Ask a related question or you get answers both at the same time. I was wondering, because I know once upon a time, you could call and ask for the mobile crisis response. So in relation to Ellen's question, can a counselor now call in and ask for, in addition to a police officer, a safe team member?
Yes, you can. And so there'll be a 911 option. So if it's an emergency and, and all of this is coming out in press release, probably tomorrow, but 911, if it's an emergency, dispatch has been through a lot of training with Manning and, and the consultant Ben Adam to really understand kind of some of the key questions to ask to identify if it's a behavioral health need or, and if somebody calls and says they want the safe team, they will do that. There will also be a line that rings into dispatch. So if it's not, you know, you, you just feel like you can't call 911, you can call a 781, 1234 number that rings into dispatch and they're able to radio right away out to the safe team, which is patrolling. So they're out patrolling and, and right now it looks like the Scooby Doo mobile. We don't have our, our real vehicle yet, but they're out in this big old white old ambulance that we wrapped in white paper. So, so they're out there driving around in that. And, and they're stopping and engaging. They were at the skate park yesterday afternoon. They're over at the senior nutrition site. So they're connecting with our community in a way that most of us don't get to, in a way that's kind of informal and be able to stop and, and have a conversation.
Thank you.
Did that answer your questions?
Pretty much.
You know, I mean, initially, the first couple of days, the calls were co responding. But you know, the consultant feels like 10 to 20% of the calls that come into the police department are really more calls for the safe team, whether it be a well check, whether it be, I haven't seen my, my sister in a while, all of those kinds of calls, those will come to the safe team and you know, we're, we're, we're connected to the police department if something needs to happen. But our whole mission is to be that, that connection to the community so that they feel safe and they can ask for help in a way that, that, that they wouldn't necessarily be able to ask the police or fire for, so.
Sounds great, actually.
Before we let Elise and Yancy go, Caitlin or Sheldon, do you guys have any questions or comments?
I do. Well, first of all, thank you both for being here and for all you do. And then Elise, you already answered my question about what hours it goes to, but how many people are on the staff and kind of what does their background look like?
So, so we currently have nine people working specifically in the safe team. And we hired them all, not, not all interviewing like this. When they showed up, I was just thankful that they were all able, able to walk in the building because all I saw was their chest up. Uh, we will go to 24 hours a day, so we'll have to staff up. So there's always an EMT on, on the, on the safe van. And there's always a crisis de-escalation individual who's been trained in that. And it's, it, there is a, the, some of the lessons we learned from the consultant. Oftentimes with that crisis de-escalation, somebody who has lived experience and then went on to a career is usually much better at de-escalating than somebody who doesn't have that lived experience. And so we have a wide variety of skilled individuals. And like I said, there is quite a few of them that graduated from Petaluma, Petaluma City Schools. Most of them are probably 10 years out of school. So yeah. About your age, Caitlin, yeah?
I was about to say, I probably know some of them then, but that's awesome. Nine, yeah, that's impressive already, yeah.
And our goal is to always have either an EMT or Crisis Intervention Counselor who speaks Spanish riding together. So there's always this ability to communicate in a language that's people are most comfortable with.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both.
And I'll be bringing forward a MOU from Petaluma People Services, both about the academic intervention team and the safe team, just and how that's going to work with the district. But we wanted to present this with upfront so that you have all the information going in. So thank you, Elise, and thank you, Yancy.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Yancy. Thanks, Elise.
All right, next up, Liz Still, Keeping Kids in School presentation.
Yes, and this is just a follow-up from the MOU that we brought forward last time because there were a lot of questions. And so Lisa Valenti and Sarah Minette and Ari Ibarra are here to, to present on what that MOU was about and talk a little bit about that.
Yeah. So thank you. Ari, are you going to show the? Thank you all for having us and for letting us to share a little bit about keeping kids in school and what we do. All right, you'll be hearing from Ari and Sarah later. I am a Diversion and Prevention Program Manager. I work for the probation department. Ariana is the Director of Sonoma Programs at Seneca and Sarah Minette is the, supervises the case managers of Keeping Kids in School at Seneca. So Keeping Kids in School at its core is a prevention program. We're designed to increase school success for students who are not currently experiencing student success, school, school success. We provide two key services to our partner schools. One is individualized case management services for chronically absent youth who are not responding to interventions at the school or district level. And then we provide support for school and district-wide attendance improvement systems. We looked at the dashboard in the 1920s school year, 7.9%, I think about 8% of Petaluma City Schools youth were chronically absent, which means they missed 10% or more of school. And so this program is designed to specifically target that group of youth. Just to provide a little bit of like history and context to the programs, to how probation became involved and why we continue to stay involved. The program began in 2015 after the presiding juvenile judge attended a conference called Keeping Kids in School and Out of Court. She came back like really excited and inspired. So she did what judges can do and convened this group of stakeholders and which included school leaders, Petaluma, I think Dave Rose at the time was a member of that group. And probation was also a member of that group. Around that same time, probation received a grant to conduct prevention services. And sort of being inspired by the work of the stakeholder group, we decided to leverage those funds to collaborate on a program with this team called Keeping Kids in School. So in 2017, at the end of the grant period, you know, our evaluation had, you know, showed promising results. Probation and school partners were excited and wanted to continue. So probation leadership made the choice to invest some of our department resources in the project along with school resources to be able to continue the program. So we're entering our, I think this is our seventh year of implementation, which is wild. And I think it's our sixth year with Petaluma City Schools. I think we, Petaluma came on the second year of our program. So what does the partnership structure look like now? You might have seen, we updated the program description and the program services MOU. Hopefully that provides a little bit more clarity for you about like what the program is and what the goals are. Of course, students and families are at the center of the Keeping Kids in School program structure. And you'll hear more from Seneca about what actually, what students and families actually experience in the program. What probation does is we administer the service contracts. We support quality assurance and evaluation activities. We have a team at our department that focuses on that. But in terms of service delivery, like probation officers or employees, we don't have anything to do with that. We contract that out to a community-based organization, to Seneca. That's totally Seneca's role. Any data that's collected for this project or not, like put into the juvenile probation system or anything like that, there's, there's, there's no connection between the two programs in that like, if you don't do well in Keeping Kids in School, there's no way to go to enter the juvenile justice system through participation in Keeping Kids in School. Keeping Kids in School is a voluntary program. And it's straight prevention. So Seneca, as you, as I've said, they conduct Keeping Kids in School services. They're the ones that work directly with Liz and the schools. Provide direct support to youth and families, collaborate with school partners on interventions for groups of students. Our school districts, of course, the, you know, y'all do it. They have their own attendance management systems. You've heard it like the SART and the SARD process to support chronically absent students. And then, then they refer youth directly to Seneca for a higher level, like individualized case management services for youth who are not responding. Our school districts also like continue to participate in those teams of support that Seneca builds around those youth to, to collaborate with the case managers and try to help figure out what the root cause of why a student is missing school and help them return to school. We have like other project partners. For example, we hold some slots for truancy court for referrals right out of like from the DA or from truancy court. We hold some open for them to refer youth who are already in truancy court for individualized case management services, basically. We also attend the Sonoma County Office of Education, like quarterly SARD meetings and present on our program and any trends or things that we're seeing in the field and share ideas and resources with schools. And with that, I'm going to pass it on to Ari, who's going to talk about the more important stuff, which is what actually kids and students experience. And Seneca, she's going to talk a little bit about Seneca.
Thank you, Lisa, for such a good overview. So I'm just going to start real briefly, just a little bit about Seneca in general. So Seneca Family and Agencies. Our agency was founded in 1985. We're a mental health organization. And our mission is to help children and families through their most difficult times. And our agent's work is guided through our unconditional care model. And at this time, we have community-based programs, foster care, adoption, family finding, residential crisis programs across 18 counties in California and also two counties in Washington. And so one of the, one of the programs here that I oversee, KKIS, is one of two school-based programs I actually oversee in our county in addition to some of the other higher tier services programs that I also oversee. But for today, I just want to focus in on KKIS and the values and the goals that we have. As far as program values, this is actually derived from a small wraparound model. And there are certain principles and values there that drive our work and our program approach. I think one of the things that really highlights this is we make a significant effort to ensure that our staff look like the community that they're serving. So we're really excited to share that over half of our staff are bilingual Latinx from this community and are active in their own universities in terms of like grassroots organizing. And so we feel really excited about being able to provide services that are culturally diverse and linguistically diverse. That's something that's really express. I think the main goals of KKIS, just to share with you, really are geared towards improving school attendance and engagement on the district and school level and increasing collaboration across program sites, across districts, across schools. We really value bridging different partnerships and systems so that way students and families are really getting what they need. And then above all, it really is about preventing future further system involvement and doing early intervention so that doesn't happen. And so Sarah Minette is with us today. She's the program supervisor of KKIS and we'll tell a little bit more detail about our service activities.
Yeah, thanks, Ari. Thanks for having us. So I just wanted to talk a little specifically about what individualized case management looks like. So after we receive a referral from school partners, that can be from teachers, counselors, school principals, we then we then, our case manager meets with the Assistant Superintendent, which is Liz, on a regular basis to talk about next steps for those referrals. Once we've decided kind of how to move forward, the case manager will connect with the family to give them an overview of what our programs are, what our services look like. And then it's voluntary. They can choose if they want to enroll or not. If they do choose to enroll in the program, they sign consents. We want to make sure that we're being really transparent and collaborative in our work with youth and families. During that engagement phase, we're doing a lot of work to build trust and rapport with these families. We want them to feel heard and respected throughout the process. We want their voice to be present in everything that we're doing. So that's a lot of that beginning phase. We're also doing a lot of assessment on what are the family's strengths? What are their needs? Are there any safety concerns? Making sure we're really addressing those root causes of chronic absenteeism. When we move into the action phase, this is kind of our like active case management. We're doing a lot of connecting youth and family to resources in the community or on the school campus that they may need or need support, kind of following through, getting connected with. We also work closely with students, families, the school team to develop goals and action steps that will help to mitigate those barriers and result in student success. So a lot of that can look like some behavior intervention with youth, parent coaching, helping parents understand their students' behaviors and how to increase motivation or set limits. A lot of routine setting in the home, some executive functioning, how do you get organized and complete school tasks? Kind of some restorative stuff in there. If there's a conflict at school or a breakdown in communication, we walk alongside families and schools to kind of bridge that gap and support student success. Once we see that students are starting to improve and are becoming more engaged in school, we start talking about our transition. And that's where we really want to solidify those skills that we've worked on, ensure that we've set up a plan for sustainability, so using their natural supports on campus or in their families to make sure if there's something that kind of we're supporting with, there's someone else to come in and take up that action step. And then once we've kind of got that established, we of course celebrate their success and we exit students from our program. A really unique aspect of this program is that even post-exit, we can still provide or we still do provide sustainability support for the next three months. And so that looks like working closely with the school to monitor their progress. And if something starts to slip, we can do outreach at that point and help to get students and families back on track and successful. And then to speak a little bit more specifically to what services looked like in Petaluma last year. Of course, as we know, it was severe with COVID. It was challenging for our youth and families and school staff and our whole community. And so we really worked to pivot in order to provide an extra layer of support during this challenging time in distance learning. To speak specifically to like the intensive case management service, our case manager in Petaluma is part-time, which means that they're on campus and available in the district about two days a week, and they hold a caseload of six to eight clients at a time. This year, we provided individualized case management to 14 students and families. And that looks like similar to what I just described in that last slide. And then the other thing that we do is really that school and district support. And so for distance learning, that looked like the case manager really partnering with school administrators to identify who are your students who are not connected, who haven't shown up, and doing outreach to those families to make sure that they knew where to pick up their Chromebook. They knew how to access a hotspot. They were working on connection issues. They knew how to navigate distance learning platform. And also, we developed an outreach letter to youth and families that was sent out expressing the importance of engaging, the desire to help. Our case manager also did a handwritten letter campaign in January. She partnered with the school principals, really specifically the high school principals, to identify what students to kind of reach out to in that manner, but really expressing like how much we care and wanted them back on campus and offering support in that way. We also, of course, as I mentioned, meet with Liz regularly to discuss attendance in the district and provide counsel on attendance intervention. And then continue to do our other like district attendance, supporting the district attendance processes like SART and SARB. And things like that. And yeah, that's kind of an overview very quickly of what we do and what services look like.
I have a question. What about kids who aren't showing up to school because they're being bullied? Or, you know, they're forced to be in a classroom with someone who's been harassing them? Or do you do that kind of intervention? How do you deal with that?
Yeah, you go ahead, Ari. So that's a great question. Yeah, we certainly want to address that. If that's a reason that kids don't want to be in the classroom, we want to be working on that. And so a lot of times we'll partner with the school counselor. At times like engage in maybe a restorative circle process, support the kid to engage in that. Also, there are times that we've worked with counselors on, is there a way to adjust a schedule? If there's some kind of barrier that can't be overcome. But certainly like interpersonal conflict, like yeah, we support youth and families to come to resolution on that so they feel comfortable and safe in their classrooms. That's so important to us.
Thank you.
Thanks for this presentation. It's super informative and very helpful. I wanted to ask, I guess it's either Sarah or Liz or somebody. So last academic year, 14 students were served. How many students were not? So either they declined to participate or we reached the capacity that you have with us.
You want to take that one, Sarah?
I keep saying Ari too, almost like jumping in. That's a great question. I don't have those numbers directly in front of me. I do know that we ended the school year with a waitlist. And so we're starting the school year with an active waitlist that the case manager will be kind of working off of as clients close. I believe that there are six or seven students on that waitlist. And I apologize that I don't have those exact numbers in front of me. Does that feel right, Liz? I know you're also really familiar with that waitlist and the client load.
That does. And what I was going to add is that last year, there were times when we had a student who we wanted to engage with Keeping Kids in School and Chelsea would reach out. And it turns out it only took two or three meetings of her just, you know, that the issues weren't what we thought they were. And it was just a matter of making sure the student was accessing their technology, getting them some executive functioning coaching, talking to the parents about, you know, the times they need to make sure their students were online because we were in distance learning. And Chelsea was able to quickly shift some of those students off her caseload faster than we thought she would. And so that helped a lot. So there was some turnover. I know there are some that she had all last year that she continues to carry on her caseload though. So it really was because everything shifted with distance learning. You know, students that we thought might not engage, engage much more quickly than we thought. So we were able to fill those slots and other students are still on her caseload. And, you know, she'll pick back up with them in the fall.
So Liz, so the six or something students who are on waitlist. You know, I know Seneca is one of multiple partners we have that provide case management-type services. And so, I mean, I want to get a feel for, you know, how our supply of these services match demand? And how many kids might be falling through either because they're, you know, they're not volunteering to participate? Or other reason?
Yeah, I mean, I wish, I wish that we could do more than six students. And I think we can double that. If we doubled our contract, I think we can do up to, I think it's 14, 12 to 14 students, Sarah. You know, if we had the full-time contract with KKIS, right now we have the six maximum. But no, there's definitely more students that need our backup to Keeping Kids in School. We also work with Mentor Me, I'm sorry, Youth Thrive Side by Side. And their MOU is going to be coming forward in August, so you learn a little bit more about that program. So whenever, you know, a student may not be quite as elevated chronically with chronic absenteeism, but they're still having attendance issues, that those are usually the students that we connect in with Youth Thrive and Side by Side so that they're doing the, you know, having the groups, the group sessions with them, hopefully getting hooked into after-school activities and then hook them into school. And we just sort of measured out that way. I would say Keeping Kids in School, we reserve for our most chronic attendance issues.
And if a kid is in that space and declines Keeping Kids in School, then they're running through the regular probation office. No?
So not this year, this past year during distance learning. Well, and not even typically, but this past year, all students were held harmless. There was no probation. There was no SARB process. We didn't do SARB meetings. So the highest it escalated for any student was SART, which is the site attendance team review, where they sit down with a counselor, a principal. You know, sometimes Chelsea from Keeping Kids in School was there too. And they just talk about attendance and try to encourage students to come to school. But that was the furthest we were able to escalate it last year because there were no cases going to the DA. We don't yet know if that's going to shift and if the DA will start taking cases again. Right now, the county office is working with probation and District Attorney's Office and starting a committee, which I volunteered to sit on as well, to see what that process might look like, that maybe is more restorative than a previous, but it's not back in place the way it was pre-pandemic. And Lisa may be able to speak more to that piece of it.
Yeah, the structure of truancy court is so confusing. So basically, the court and the district attorney, sort of like schools through the Sonoma County Office of Education, might choose to refer a youth to truancy court. And then it's the District Attorney's Office that sort of makes the decision if they're going to proceed with that case. Probation, like our role, you know, we don't really have a formal role in truancy court per se, but we do provide like support and, you know, I come from a school background. So we definitely, like Liz, sit on those committees to support like their ideas and work and definitely hold slots and support kids that are in truancy court. But in terms of like having oversight or anything like that of truancy court, we don't have a formal role in that. It's more consultative.
Thank you.
I know also historically, Petaluma has a really kind of robust SARB process and does a really good job of providing intervention. And so I think Lisa can back me up on this. They've historically had a very low number of students who have escalated into truancy court, which is great, like doing a great job.
Yeah. Yeah. And like, I think not last year, like Liz said, last year, they, I don't think they even had truancy court. But the year before that, I want to say there might have been like two kids or something from Petaluma. Like it's just not very high at all that we're seeing.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions or comments?
And just so you know, the MOU is brought back. It's later on the agenda again. So if you were able to read through that, if you have questions now, Lisa's also able to speak to what the shifts, she did change some of the language, like she said, from the last one you read to the one that was posted this time, so.
What were some of the things that you changed?
The only part that I changed was the very first part on there that just is the program description. The rest of it, the sort of terms of the agreement are the same. But the program description is just updated and it's hopefully clearer.
It was very thorough, I thought.
Thank you. Yeah, and I know it's hard, like every time we see something related to law enforcement.
Oh.
But unfortunately, you know, just like the previous presentation, you know, attendance is compulsory and sometimes it's a sign of a bigger issue, which is why I'm so glad that we have these mental health services in line with like the law enforcement and all of that, so it doesn't just go straight to court. So absolutely appreciate what you guys are doing in our district, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
For having us.
Thanks. Okay, next up, Tobacco-Free Senoma Presentation.
Is that Liz again?
It is. Pam Granger is coming from our community. She works Tobacco-Free Senoma and wanted to speak with you all about potentially about a resolution regarding tobacco. So, and I'll let her speak to that. I see her in here now. And Pam, I saw that you emailed your presentations. Did you want me to share those slides or did you want to share them?
Share them too, Liz.
Okay, thanks. Did you get them in the email?
Yeah, yeah, I got it.
Okay, thanks, Ashley.
Great. So I'm just getting acclimated to joining you in person here. Oh, there I am. And I'm going to take a stab at. I got. It was suggested that people could hear better if I use this headset.
Do you hear me okay? Did that? Oh, good. Okay. It makes me feel so TV announcer. What can you say? The, so anyway, thank you so much for having me being part of an US here tonight. Just as a reminder, tonight, the hat that I'm wearing is the Chair of Tobacco-Free Senoma County Community Coalition. Takes quite a mouthful to get all that out. The reason that I'm here is to give you a little update on what's going on in the world of tobacco control as it relates to schools and education. And to, next slide, please, cutting right to the chase. I'm here because we're wanting to ask the Petaluma City Schools Board of Education, y'all, for a school board resolution opposing the use and sale of e-cigarettes and electronic vaping devices. Just as a bit of information, the California School Board Association provides an excellent sample that could be a jumping off point should you decide that you support asking staff to work with us to come up with a resolution. Why would we want a resolution? Well, it'll be eminently clear. But as we move forward to come to help combat together youth tobacco use of all kinds, showing community sport is absolutely vital. So next slide, please. You know, just as we were patting ourselves on the back about getting combustible commercial smoking down into single digits, along came electronic smoking devices, AKA e-cigs or vapes. Youth vaping has undone years of progress in reducing youth nicotine addiction. We found, you found, we all found kids who wouldn't think of smoking a combustible product because it was smelly and easily detected, were lured in to try and often become hooked on e-cigarettes. This is in part because big tobacco slash big vape doesn't let up. In order to remain profitable, they must hook each new generation. And you know, you guys, they're not going after you and me. They're going out to our young people because they can be lifelong customers, like woo-hoo. They were losing ground, but e-cigs have provided the industry with new opportunities to engage our youth with appealing flavors, customized vape devices and strong social media presence. As you know, youth use of e-cigarettes is an epidemic across the nation and national use is reflected in Petaluma. One in four of our Petaluma High School juniors has used flavored tobacco or vaping products as of status from last year. And that's almost 50% in our alternative education settings. So we had a little bit of a break. Last year's distance learning was filled with challenges, but we did get a little break from social sourcing and peer influence. So vaping and other tobacco use is reported to have declined modestly. But that break is over, so we have a real sense of urgency of taking action. Next slide. The, so this, you've seen, this picture reflects sort of a little history, like a six-year history of vaping products going from the cigalights up to the things that I call the Saturn V rockets. Starting back in, oh, maybe 2015, when they entered in the field. Juul was able, out of San Francisco, yay, go locals, to gain 75 to 80% of the market in just three years. And it wasn't because they took market share from other competitors. It's because they grew that pie. So that pie went from the size of a cupcake to the size of a sheet cake, big. The, and how is it they do this? It's because while schools are trying to figure out how to provide comprehensive education experience and to support student mental health, the industry didn't stop. They never stop. This slide shows you a little bit of some of the changes. But when the FDA decided to ban the sale of flavored refillable cartridges like Juul's, so they took out the creme brulee and the mango, but they left them with the menthol and the tobacco flavor. No problem. Competitors jumped in to field. No problem. Competitors jumped in to fill the, fill the void. Next slide please. The, here's an example of what became, if you haven't seen them already, look for these bright products on a campus near you. Sadly, you could see them on some of our elementary school campuses, but most certainly on our junior high and high school campuses. These brightly colored products are the new darling puff bar happily filled the market, adding additional environmental waste disposable, right? They're disposable as opposed to refillables. And I just use them and toss them. And you can get fun wearing apparel and they offer a dozen appealing products, a color flavor, excuse me. And we'll look at just one more in the fill the void. Next slide please. The Marco Caro is the Sonoma County Impact Sonoma Compliance Staff Member. And he was told during recent visits that retailers in Petaluma see the flum float. It's, it's hard to say that fast, F L U, and the flum float disposable vape are flying off the shelves. The flum provides users with approximately 3,000 puffs and is made with 5% nicotine e-juice, which you would have perhaps no reason to know is incredibly strong. And when you make that with the e-salt, it's absorbed so much faster. So you can see they, these actually sort of are like the whip it cartridges that people huff. You know, you might use to make your own, you know, frothy beverages. And also you can't see the picture as well, but on, on the right is a another fun variety of hemp vape. And so you know, not to, not to be left out, we've got hemp vapes available. And they marketed during the COVID distance, certainly shamelessly. You might recall that they were offering masks. So come in and get your vape products and you can get a free mask. The irony of something that potentially does lung damage and offering you a mask to save your health was not lost on everybody. And they also have things about youth and depression and stuck at home and you can't get out. No problem. You can calm yourself with your vape product. Next slide please. So the, what are we going to do about it? Because we obviously just can't let status quo go. So we need to quote, we need to continue working together, which we have been doing. There's no one solution. So no one thing is the answer to keep kids from initiating on any kind of tobacco products. But there are many proven strategies and we can surround our kids. And I did a speech in junior high about musk oxen. And I remember thinking that they showed real teamwork, as I told my ninth grade group of graduates, because they would band together and they face off outward with their horns going out to keep away predators. And so let's get our horns going and face outward because we really need to take some action. Now, one thing that's a good strategy is prevention education and Petaluma City Schools is working and has been working on that. You have tobacco use prevention education grant and you've had a Department of Justice grant. So those are things that have been done and will continue to, to take place. Tobacco retail license passing is a policy change that can be done. And I'll talk a little bit more about that. And then cessation. And so for young people, you'll be happy to know that cigarette e-cig products and chew services are available through a variety of sources. One of them is the state tobacco control program and that young people as young as 13 can get cessation assistance without the need of having parental approval. This is also available with an app, right? Isn't there an app for everything? And so they can get text support. Next slide please. So we get right down to, to the meat of the ask for tonight. What we're trying to do on our side and that our side, we have a Petaluma chapter of the tobacco free Sonoma County, of which you send representatives so that we continue to work together on this is we're wanting the council to pass what we call it, what is called the tobacco retail license. It would require that the local retailers would pay an annual fee and that would support education and enforcement. So it would not be a cost to anybody except for the individuals who want to sell daily products. And it would also have penalties and revocation of the fees if necessary. So if, if we caught them selling to kids, we could do something more important in this. We can put sales regulations. So we can affect product selection, flavors hook kids. Our recommendation will be to have a flavored tobacco ban. We can affect access and availability. Just think about it, your house. If you're hungry and you want a snack, if you've already cut up celery sticks or carrot sticks, you're perhaps apt to grab them. But if all you have is an already open bag of chips, you know, so we can want to effect just like that. We want to propose restricting sales near youth sensitive locations. So like around schools and the library and parks. And we want to reduce density. Heck, we've got 59 places that you can buy tobacco products in town. And if we used a guideline, well, guideline would be to have none. But if no more than one per 2,000 people, we would only have 30. So we've got too many. And then we can also ask the council to take action that will increase the price because you know, our kids are price sensitive. The state has already increased taxes, which is good. But we can take stand such as increasing a minimum pack size. So you couldn't get two little cigars for a buck, you'd have to get them in maybe a pack of five. So they'd have to get at least 10 and then have that be $10. So to really get in the way of just the casual purchase. We certainly would also recommend not having coupons because it doesn't do any good to increase the, the cost and then have the industry say, but here's $5 off. Next slide please. So we're going to go right back through what, what's happened so far. So you can see where you fit in this. Back in January, two years ago, Impact Sonoma and the Coalition made a presentation to you. Then we were successful in meeting with Petaluma City Council and asking them to add a tobacco retail license to list of goals. We circled back around and met with Petaluma City's staff on a vaping roundtable discussion in October. And some of your kids, the Petaluma Youth Commission made a presentation, they had selected vaping as an important thing for them to tackle during their semester on the Coalition. And that sort of pushed the council over the edge. They directed their staff to, to bring back a license. And then came COVID and to everybody and fire, take your pick, you know, it all happened at the same time. And so we had a little bit of a delay, but at the first of the year, we began to meet again with the police department to create our sample policy. And once again, the youth commission before they broke for summer, reinforced their interest in the city council and having action taken. And, and then we were lucky. Okay, we worked real hard at it. There's no luck involved. At the end of June, the Petaluma City Council made passing a tobacco retail license a priority. Next slide please. So we've done all this. We've been doing our homework. You've been working with us. What we need now is just a good idiom and some support. So whether you say it takes a village, we can't do it together. We're all in this together. We need to make an upstream investment. Whether, you know, I say, help me, help you. Will it be help? You know, you want to help us help you. I'm circling back around to, to what our ask is. And our ask is that that we work together and that you go on record as passing a resolution opposing the use and sale of electronic smoking devices and you can, and more could be out tobacco products. And of course, you would personalize it in ways that it makes sense to you and staff. But I'm hoping that, that you'll have some discussion and then perhaps make that commitment this evening. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Pam. Can you send me that link? Cause I'm very passionate and agreeable and amenable to what you're proposing because big tobacco and big everything really target the queer community and people especially. And there's, it, I mean, I've seen what it has done to the queer community at Berkeley and I don't want it to happen to any of our kids here.
Yes, yes, it's true. It is a real big social issue, social justice issue. The industry doesn't leave anybody out. We've come a long way, baby, about that. When I was in college, like, yes, I'll let me do about, you didn't want to smoke, but and then to find out that they, they pray there's a higher smoking percentage among LGBTQ people than other populations and menthol with our black colleagues. So yeah, it's a big social justice thing. I'll be happy to send you that link.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for bringing that to light, Caitlin. I had no idea. Ellen or Sheldon, do you guys have anything to add or questions?
Except that I think it would be a very important resolution for us to pass.
Yeah.
So Pam, are you, I mean, you know, we're a school district. We don't have taxing authority. Who are we addressing this resolution to? Is this something you want to arm yourself to city council with? And if so, you know, I, I, my guess is it wouldn't be too much of an effort maybe to, you know, have a, have a mind meld with the other school districts in Petaluma and pass the same one. You know, maybe we can get together the presidents of the school boards of all the, of all the cities, school districts. Put, you know, hash out, maybe Caitlin can help us cash out the resolution. And then just have all of the districts pass the same one, just as a show of solidarity to the city council.
It's a great idea, Sheldon.
The, I do have an appointment with somebody in Dobie school district now because even though you're the biggest and the mightiest, you've got a heck of a lot of feeder districts. I know if we can snatch them all up. But yes, the idea would be to pass it as a statement and then share that with city council when they start having discussion deliberation. So you wouldn't have to, you wouldn't be asking them to do anything other than take a stand and pass a bill that has, that includes strategies that will reduce youth tobacco use because of its impact on education. And so if it makes any sense, I might propose, we've been working with Liz and staff on other things, you know, similar things because of the grants. We are more than willing to provide support to her, to, you know, as a, to provide a, to create a sample to bring back for your approval, if that makes sense to, to Matthew and Liz.
That would work for me. Yeah, I'd be happy to work with you on a, on a draft resolution to bring back.
Yeah, well, I saw a lot of nodding heads. So I'm going to, your mom says just stop when you're ahead. So so thank you very much, everybody. I think this is a good, good, I've got two grandkids in the district. So let me tell you. You know, this is, this is personal beyond my usual tobacco control. So, so thank you for that.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you for all your work, Pam.
Welcome.
All right, next. I think Liz might be off the hook finally, at least for a minute.
No, actually, this is me presenting.
All right. It is the Liz show tonight.
It is, I know, but this will be the last.
It's a really good show.
All right, let me screen share.
Opening COVID plan. Yes, we're waiting with bated breath.
Yes, and Brian is here too.
So Brian's still with us.
I know. Yes. I see, present. All right. So I will, I'll be brief, but I'll leave plenty of time for questions. So I'm just going to kind of give a broad brush. And then if you want to get more details from myself or from Brian, we'll leave time for that as well. So we just wanted to talk about where we are with COVID safety protocols and our restarting of school. And opening, opening back up. So essentially the CDC just passed their guidance on July 9th. And that's sort of what we were waiting to see. What is the CDC going to say? Before we could work on our handbook, before we thought about updating any COVID safety plans or any other, any other work to know what is school going to look like in the fall. So on July 9th, they passed theirs. And then the CDPH, the California Department of Public Health, took what the CDC recommended and then created their own guidelines. And essentially the, the order of the way we follow it is CDC to CDPH to Sonoma County. And so Sonoma County is essentially, would essentially be the, the one that we follow based on that. So you know, sometimes we get emails saying, well, the CDC said this, yes, but we then follow what CDPH said. And then what the county, if they've added anything on to that. So CDPH released their guidance on July 12th, so just about a week ago. And we have that information now. And the most recent information we've gotten from our department, our county department of health is saying that they're essentially going to follow the CDPH guidelines. However, we argued, there is a meeting with SCO coming up on August 5th to tell us, you know, if there's any more particulars to that. So we just have this information as of July 12th. It's fresh off the press and we are working quickly and diligently to try and make sure that we're meeting all the requirements, especially because we have our year round schools starting. And so the foundational principle of the guidance that's coming from CDPH is that all students must have access to safe and full in-person instruction to as much instructional and to as much instructional time as possible. So essentially what that means is they're saying, we just want to do school as usual. We want to give students access to instruction again. And just have students back fully in school. So in order to do this, the question then becomes what do we need to do? And I think I moved forward one too many slides. Nope. So here we are. So in order to have students back in-person instruction to the full extent possible, CDPH and our county are asking that we do universal masking. Masks will be optional outdoors for all K-12 school settings. So you know, during, during recess, for example, but they are required indoors at all PCS sites. Physical distancing, again, because we're back in instruction where we're going to have full classes. That means that we can only physical distance as much as we can, knowing that, you know, we may have 30 students in a classroom. And so they don't have any distance seating requirements in the classroom. They're just asking that, you know, we monitor for spacing as much as, as possible, given the constraints that we have with any facilities and having a full campus back in session. Modified quarantine protocols is that we are going to, if, in the past practice was that, you know, what we did with the, you know, some of the, the day study centers was that if a class or a cohort had a case, we would close the whole thing down. Now that's not the case anymore. We are actively contact tracing. We have our contact tracing team of nurses, contact tracers, obviously Brian, our COVID coordinator. And so in the instance of a positive case, we're just need to meet requirements. And those requirements are going to be that you can continue to come to class, even if there's been a positive case in your class as long as you are getting screened twice a week. And as long as you're not showing symptoms. And then if anything comes up with the screening, we would go from there with county health to see what we might need to do with, with a class or a cohort. There is no more stable group requirement. We had a question from a principal saying, you know, what if I wanted to do, if I had a reading specialist and they were pulling students from different classrooms or different grade levels, could those students come from different groups and then mix in a new group? And the answer is yes, again, because we're back to full time instruction in as much of a regular format and fashion as we can for the best quality instruction. And that's once again, why we're asking people to wear masks. And then as far as food service and bathroom use goes, there, there's minor modifications. But again, bathrooms are open, food service is open. And I don't know, Chris, if you wanted to add anything about those specifically before I flip slides.
No.
Okay. So we are going to continue to encourage our parents and our staff to use the parent square to monitor for symptoms before they drop their students off at campus or before they come to campus. And obviously, individuals should not come to campus with symptoms. That's going to be written in our brought in our handbooks, which is sort of our overarching what information about COVID that we're having families attest that they've seen in our areas data at testation this year. Hand hygiene will continue. We are going to continue to provide everyone what they need for proper hygiene, as well as just having, you know, the hand sanitizer in the classroom. So the students enter the classroom. They can sanitize our hands each time, just to to keep up that practice and keep up that hygiene. Care tents we put up at the end of last year as we were having students come back on campus and hybrid learning. And essentially, that was just so that we still had our nurse's office open for any other things that were going on. A student that may be sick with something else, or maybe scraped a knee or needs to go home for some reason. We have a nurse's office, but a care tent is a very COVID symptom specific area where students can go and and isolate, you know, that they have supervision, but just be away from other students while they wait for parents to pick them up. And again, we ask parents or guardians come, you know, within 30 minutes if if a student is showing symptoms and we need to have them in a care tent. You, in order to return to school, if you are showing any negative symptoms, you do have to have a negative PCR test or an alternative diagnosis from the doctor. So anyone who is showing some COVID symptoms, they'll have to go get tested and show that they don't have COVID. So they can safely come back to campus. Our drinking fountains will remain off, so we're encouraging students to bring their own bottles because the hydration stations will be open just to keep one level of distance from, you know, having students hovering hovering above a drinking fountain. And then we're going to continue, like I said, our contact tracing with our team of tracers and just provide any and all information like we've been doing on positive cases, on what to watch out for, on symptoms and on the importance of screening. Our student and family handbook will be updated by July 22nd. It's I saw the first draft form today that Brian's been working on diligently. And then the Cal Ocean Protection Plan, we're thinking by the end of this month. So that's just a, again, very broad overview. We're coming back to school as usual. In order to do so, we want people to be safe with masks and with with hygiene, you know, healthy hygiene practices. But just like I said, we have Brian here and just wanted to see if you had any questions about all of this.
I don't have any questions. Is anyone else? All right. Well, thank you. Thank you, Brian. Glad you're back.
Thank you. Nice to see everybody. Have a good evening.
You too. All right, moving on. Is this you too, Liz? Independent study?
No, this is Tony. So thank you all for your patience with me this evening.
No, thank you.
Great as usual.
Yes. All right, Tony, take it away.
Okay, I am up. So good evening, everybody. I do want to share my screen here for a quick second. Sorry, I'm having a little bit of technical difficulties.
No worries. Take your time.
I was kicked off like a minute ago and I logged back in and then
Is it not allowing you to share, Tony?
Yeah.
I was kicked off too. Actually, can you make Tony, make sure that he can share?
He, all panels should be able to share. Is your computer asking you for permissions to allow Zoom to? Is that what it's doing?
Yeah, it is.
Maybe make him co-host, Ashley.
It's a computer based, it sounds like it's a computer based thing. He needs to allow him to access his computer. Is that, that's what's happening?
I mean, do you want me to share your slideshow?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can do that. Just tell me when you want to forward. Give me a minute.
That'd be great.
Can you share it with Jason, Tony?
I think he's he's on this.
I have it. I have it. I just got to get it up.
Yeah.
We go there. Is that it, Tony?
That is it. Yes, thank you. Okay, so yeah, thanks, Jason. You can put it to the next slide. So as you might know, Governor Gavin Newsom signed Assembly Bill 130 to law on July 9th, so about 11 days ago. And this bill makes changes to independent studies to address the students whose health have been at risk by in person instruction. Among other things, next slide. So for us to be in compliance, for districts to be in compliance with this new mandate, all students need to be provided the option of independent studies for the 21, 20, 22 school year. Districts that for whatever reason can't provide the independent studies option, have other options to to enter into interdistrict attendance agreement with other districts or contract out with the county office of education to to provide those services. Next slide. So part of the requirements under AB 130 is updating, the board needs to update its board policy or amendments to the existing policy for independent studies, making sure that the new mandates are added in as required by AB 130. And this board policy needs to be approved before the start of school. Next slide. So there are some specific things that need to go into the board policy and I'll highlight some of them. These aren't all of them, but these are some important ones. So satisfactory progress as added means to evaluate continued independent study participation and placement. Provisions of standards aligned content in independent studies that is substantially equivalent to the quality and intellectual challenge of the in person instruction. So whatever we're doing, independent study with students, it needs to be equal, if not better than than what they would get in person. And particularly for high school students, they need to have equal access to all courses that are required for graduation, as well as courses that are either G approved. Procedures for tiered reengagement when students do not attend for three consecutive school days or 60% of the instructional day in the school week. A plan for synchronous instruction for all grade levels and and live daily interactions for grades four through eight and a plan to transition students who wish to return into in person instruction within five days. Next slide, please. So this is a kind of a visual of what that synchronous instruction might look like. For example, TK3 needs daily minimum synchronous instructions, grades four through eight and needs daily live interaction as well as a weekly synchronous instruction and grades nine through 12 needs weekly synchronous instruction. Excellent. So other requirements that AB 130 requires is that we update our written agreement for independent studies. So some of those important mandates that need to be in within the written agreement are things such as the manner, time, frequency and place for communicating with students and parents. Or guardians regarding academic progress, confirmation that all students have access to the connectivity and and devices. So making sure that our our students have adequate access to to all the resources to be able to access the the independent study program, description of educational progress that would trigger an evaluation of whether or not a pupil should be allowed to continue in the independent studies. Description of academic and other supports to address the needs of students who are, for example, not performing at a grade level, English learners, students who are in foster care or experiencing homelessness, students who need mental health support, students with disabilities. In addition to written agreements must be signed by students, parents, teachers and all those who are who have direct responsibility to the students. So for this year, this written agreement needs to be signed no later than 30 days before the day of instruction, where normally it would be before the day of instruction. Next slide. So AB 130 has a requirement that districts also notify parents. So there's a big component where we need to notify the parents of the option to enroll in person and independent studies for the school year. One big important thing is that upon a parent's request, we need to hold a student parent educator conference prior to enrollment and the students and within that conference, whether it's by phone or by video conference or by in person, it needs to ensure that all the people who have direct responsibility to the student is there and present as well as information about enrollment, disenrollment, reenrollment and in the program for synchronous or asynchronous instruction. Next slide, please. So as well as the written agreement, there's requirements for documentation. So we are required to document live interaction and synchronous instruction by grade level by for each school day for which independent stays is provided in whole or in part. We need to provide evidence for written or computer based evidence for student engagement with assignments, grades, assessments for each class, including things like grade book, progress reports or any other summary documents. And and documentation of students who do not participate on a school day and making sure that we label them as non participatory for that day. Next slide, please. In addition to documentation, we are, there's also audits, the the enacted budget requires an annual audit for things to verify classroom ratios, verification of adoption of written policies consistent with the law and compliance with reviews to ensure that independent state students are under the general supervision of a certified, certificated staff and the documentation of of live and synchronous instruction is happening, as well as evidence of student engagement is maintained and accurately recorded. Next slide. So there's some additional notes that I want to highlight as well. AB 30, one, AB 130 is a provision only for this school year. Independent study option requirement does not apply to the charter schools. For special education students, participation in independent state continues to be subject to the IEP team determination as already laid out in the law and students who disenroll from independent series and studies are no longer guaranteed that their homeschool they'll be able to go back to their homeschool. So that really just depends on if there's space or room for them to return back to the homeschool if they want to disenroll from the independent studies. All of this is kind of brand new, like a, like I had mentioned earlier, it came out 11 days ago and the CDE is still looking to provide further guidance in the next coming weeks. So we'll be watching out to see what kind of guidance for the guidance that will be and hopefully get a clearer picture of what our expectations are for that. Next slide, please. So some next steps is updating an approval of our independent studies board policies and making sure that it reflects the provisions within AB 130. Updating our master written agreement so that reflects the requirements under AB 130. We'll be sending out a parent survey within the next day or two to determine how many parents are interested in independent study as laid out under AB 130. The notifications to our parents, we should be up in our website, hopefully this week, as well as through notification to parent square and other communication tools that we have. And then making sure that we coordinate with our departments so that we can implement independent studies with fidelity. So with that, I know it went through pretty fast. So if there's any questions or anything I need to clarify, please, please let me know.
I think too, just just important to note that, you know, this has been, it came, came by, came to us very, very recently. So we put together a first read of to update our board policy. We just found out a few hours ago that CSBA released a a a sample sample in this independent study policy, board policy. So this first read, and actually, as I'm looking at both of them, they're, actually, they're fairly close. But we'll probably do a do this as a first read and then, you know, ideally try to merge anything that we left out or that we, you know, we may possibly change for a second read, which will be at the following board meeting.
Tony, thank you and welcome to the district. Thanks for that information. And you already answered one of my questions about your demand. It sounds like we're going to find out demand for this within the coming weeks.
And Sheldon, on that, on that question about demand too, we'll find out from our, you know, from our parents. I've also been in contact with old Adobe, while some of our other feeder districts, I were assuming that not everybody's going to have their own independent study program. And so there's there's some some opportunities here for some synergy around, you know, creating a program and then, you know, doing some sort of interdistrict agreement with with some of our our partner districts.
I see. And that that actually gets to the second question I was going to ask Matthew, which was our but we imagine in terms of housing this, you know, is it, are we thinking about Valley Oaks or is demand going to be, you know, high higher than where it needs to be more decentralized or would are, have we got that far yet? Are we still figuring that out?
Yeah, I mean, I think where where we have been thinking through that, we've met with a few, few of our principals. Valley Oaks certainly already, you know, has the high school, high school in place, 912. We've we've met with Becky. We've talked to Becky. She's pretty confident that she can change some of the, you know, change a slight variation on what she needs to do to make to meet the requirements of Assembly Bill 130. As for the TK6 and the seven, eight program, we thought about, you know, values could be one option, similar to what we did last year, but we're really looking for to to build this robust program, a little bit more robust program. And we're talking about Valley Vista has space for the program for TK6 and Peddleman Jr. Has some space for the seven, eight program. Again, really depends on what kind of demand we're talking about. So we'll have more information probably, you know, next week.
Yeah, thank you, Tony, because I've been bugging Matthew for a few weeks now. Like, what is happening? Yeah, because it just came up upon us. So I just have a question. So are we going to have to hire more teachers that are just teaching like the four through, is it six or eight? Daily instruction or is that going to be like after teacher hours?
No, well, we'll have, we'll, we'll have to do some hiring. Tony is working on, Tony and Jason are working on that. Because we've met with, we've met with PFTs to sort of talk, talk through a little bit with them. The TK6 program, I mean, clearly, you know, again, depending on the numbers is how many teachers we're going to be able to support with the program and and seven, eight, really, you're, it's, it's going to be different, right? Seven through 12, based on subject areas. It looks, looks, looks a little bit different, elementary and secondary.
And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, because there's, again, it's so new, but it was saying that we have to provide independent option at each school, but then you're saying like they might not be able to go back to their school. So it's actually like each district has to provide an option, not each site?
So it's not, it's not by school. It's by by our district. And so we would have one program, right? So let's take elementary as an example. If we ended up doing something at Valley Vista, it would be, here's our program on the traditional calendar, we will provide, because otherwise, right, we run into the issue of are we just going to do hybrid again? I mean, nobody, nobody wants to do that again. So we really need to separate and say, all right, our, our schools are designed right now. We're going back full time in person instruction or schools. And we're surveying our parents. We want to meet the demand if 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 families say this, you know, I have a child who just cannot go back in person to in person full, you know, instruction. Okay, here's the option that we're going to provide for you and we're going to try to, you know, create a program in several, in a few weeks, that's going to be meet, meet these require, meet and or exceed these requirements so that we can provide an independent studies or virtual academy for for our students who need that option. And then, of course, when, if and when they get a vaccine or they're ready to go back to school, then they may return to their campus of choice. So if there's, if there's space, I mean, the, you know, our, our goal would be to bring students back to their original campus. But of course, you know, there's, there's got to be space. So.
What about meeting other than just academic needs? Social emotional needs, that kind of stuff?
Part of why you'd want to, part of why you'd want to put it on an elementary campus or a junior high campus or saying, if, if a family said, look, we're, we're really just not for medical reasons, able to to go, you know, full time in person instruction. We'd like to do this virtual independent study option, but we'd like them to be able to participate in X, Y, or Z after school and outdoor, outdoor program, or we feel come, we feel comfortable with that. We just don't feel comfortable with the indoor part at this point. Having it on those campuses would allow to have, you know, some of those social emotional components as well.
So we will offer that as an option. Thank you.
Never a dull moment.
Okay, any, anyone else? Anything else? Well, that was a great first presentation, Tony.
Yes, impressive. Welcome.
All right, moving on to comments from the public on non-agendized items. I'm going to read our board. I'm going to read our board policy for public comment. Under Government Code Section five, four, nine, five, four point three A. Members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest. Providing it relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. While government code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services, and or employees. The district does have a policy specific to complaints against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee. The board requests that the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. If the comment is about something that is not on the agenda. Will be heard only during the public comment or non-agendized items period. Once that part of the meeting is over, comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. The board values public comments, and although we cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda. We listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Public comments are subject to a four-minute per person limit or a twenty-minute limit per subject matter. So we're going to open up the chat for a bit, and we're going to let Matthew decide when to close it. If you have a comment, please put your first and last name in the item that you would like to speak towards. As a reminder, this is just about non-agendized items.
Okay, looks like we can. Got two comments here, there, I think we can close the chat. The first comment says this is in regards to six point four. Oh, gotcha.
School reopening.
School reopening, okay. And then we have one, we've got one just to read, so I can start with the one to read and then we can bring in the next, okay?
Okay.
So, I don't, because I don't, I just don't, I don't see her in attendance right now, so otherwise we'd call her up. This is from Linda Judah. Her comment is, I would like to ask the board to consider amending their charter. To have board seats elected by precincts, regions. I've looked at the map and the precincts and numbers of voters, and there are certainly equitable ways to divide the precincts into north, south, east, west, and central. In this way, each grouping would elect their one member to the board, and that board member would be accountable to their constituents. This would also make it possible for a citizen to directly challenge the incumbent, incumbent from their specific region. This has been done in other locations, example, San Francisco City Council seats. And I believe it'll make the board more accountable and more representative of the population of Petaluma. I also encourage the board to consider removing barriers to running for a board seat. For example. The board could, could agree to find one candidate from each of the five regions for a set amount, perhaps three thousand dollars. This would make it much easier for low-income peddlums to participate. I refer the board to the National League of Cities document. That describes the difference between at-large and district elections. Basically, as city, as a city grows. Switching to district elections results in greater access for marginalized groups to gain representation. Pendulum has grown to the point where district elections make sense. Thank you for considering this proposal. Okay, Ashley, you want to bring Susan Smith up for her comment?
Good afternoon. This is about the COVID reentry and turning off the water fountains. While turning off water fountains may seem like a good idea, it will put some of our students at a disadvantage. At Petaluma High School, we have given away durable water bottles to students before. We would like, we should do that again this year, district-wide, to make sure the playing field is even. Even for those kids who are unprepared or economically disadvantaged. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. And then our last comment is Pam Granger.
Hello, I just was looking for a clarification also of the reopening. I didn't catch whether or not. The same, I'm going to call it a fogger. I don't know that that's a fair representation, but. I'm thinking specifically at near school, it seemed like Lucy every evening had to walk around and sort of spray everything down. Which I'm trying not to editorialize. I just wondered whether that would still be. The procedure or whether distancing masks and. An alternative. Opportunities were all. So the questions on, on fogger sanitizing. Whenever, and I know, you know, I know you don't need to enter into a dialogue. I just missed that. Thank you.
I'm happy to clarify if you'd like me to, based on the prior.
That'd be great. Thank you.
So we did use electrostatic sprayers or foggers. During the, the majority of the pandemic, when we had, before we actually returned to in-person instruction. In April, when we returned, we actually, because of the guidance had changed. We actually moved to using soap and water inside the classrooms to be wiping down desks and et cetera. So we stopped electrostatically spraying inside the classrooms at that time. We did continue to electrostatically spray our restrooms, our student restrooms. And outdoor picnic tables and play area, play structures, et cetera. But we also found a plant-based, non-toxic product to use for that. And so we continue, we're, we're planning on continuing to use the same cleaning protocols for the opening of school. Both this week at Pangrove and Cherry Valley, and then in August for the rest of schools. So again, that would be soap and water inside the classrooms. High touch points during the day, like door knobs, door handles, et cetera. And then doing regular cleaning of our restrooms throughout the day, and then. At night, we would only electrostatically spray using this non-toxic chemical. Again, student restroom areas, perhaps things like multis, depending on their use. Outdoor picnic tables and play structures, but not inside the classrooms.
Thanks, Chris.
Yeah, thank you. All right, moving on to comments from the, sorry, report on activities and correspondence of school board members. So, over the past couple of weeks, Adult Ed Graduation, SCO Youth Voices Forum. Bill Dodd Town Hall with Tony Thurman, Site Visit to Summer School at McDowell, Stone County N double A C P Meeting, Budget Perspectives Workshop. Chippa and Superintendent Meetings. Did anyone want to speak about any of their activities? Actually wanted to hear more from Sheldon.
Yeah, I want to, happily to share a little bit from the SCO Youth Voices Forum. This is something, they had another one a couple of weeks ago. That was like the ones they held last fall, except in this case, while the panel was mixed BIPOC. The focus really was on, you know, what, what were the challenges, what it was like to be a student during the pandemic. And it was very enlightening. The students were amazingly, I mean, they were so articulate and actually had some great. Summaries that they wanted to make sure were, were heard widely. So I want to just share quickly what they were summarizing. One thing they said was, it was extremely mentally challenging that there was a lot of. Mental stress over this past year from the variety of stresses that we have with the pandemic, the fires, and the drought and everything like that. They said, one thing that really makes all the difference in how well they were able to cope through the year. Was a really supportive teacher. They said that really makes a difference, and they were, went even further in saying. The supportive teacher is one who is proactive in reaching out to them. And not letting anybody slip, you know, past, and I think that, you know, resonates strongly with what, what we already know about that. They also had a very clear call to action as we, as we move forward with fall opening. And their recommendation was to take the time to help us heal. Is essentially what they were saying. Take the time to address social emotional impacts of the pandemic. Take the time to help students resocialize with their peers and their teachers as we return to fall. And so, you know, I'm really happy about. The, this district's and, and the decision and the cooperation with our teachers and our staff. To have this week of welcome that we're going to, you know, kick off the school year with. This is exactly what the students at this forum were, were prescribing. Taking the time at the beginning to readjust to school life. Before we dive head into the academic components of, of school. The one, one thing more, Joanna, I want to share was, you know, the students who were on this forum, I, I think they were all from Santa Rosa. And it made me wonder about something that I know that you've been asked, asked about in the past, which is. Should we and would it be helpful to have a similar type of forum, to host a similar type of forum with students? In Petaluma City Schools. And, and, you know, when I think back about the last couple of years. You, you know, the, the evidence is that we have very proactive students. Think about the presentations that we have heard. From our students without our invitation. The diversifying our curriculum, students from Petaluma High. The students who developed the two websites for Casa Grande, Petaluma High to express. Exactly these kinds of challenges that students are having at school. These are indications of students who want to say something to power. And so, you know. The, the SCO does a fantastic job hosting these things. I wonder if we can take their cue. And try to do something local with them. You know, I know we have a pretty robust agenda for addressing. School climate, you know, and racial and social justice issues here, and so I don't want to, you know. Step on anything here, but I, I wonder if there's room maybe in something that. You know, room with what we're doing with Circle Up or, or some other venue where we might do, host something. For our own students to have the space to tell us, you know, what are the real issues here?
Thank you. Anyone else? I don't know if anyone else attended that, that wanted to share or about any of your other activities.
I was there, but I think Sheldon did a great job. Except I think it's a great idea to do a forum in Petaluma. Because he's right, it's usually kids from Santa Rosa. So it would be great to hear from our own students, and I'm sure they would have plenty to tell us.
Definitely, and it feels like, maybe not this time, but the other forums that they've held throughout the years. There's been at least one or two of our students, so, yeah, thank you for sharing. All right, moving on, comments from the public on consent items. So if anyone in the public has a comment on. Any of the consent agenda items, please put your first and last name in the chat, in the item that you would like to speak towards.
Okay, it looks like we can close the chat. Let's see, there, there are no comments.
Okay, all right, approval of consent agenda, can I get a motion?
I need to abstain on the warrants. So I moved to pull the warrants from the consent agenda.
What item is that, Caitlin?
Ten point something.
Ten point, two point three.
All right, so you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I moved to Paul ten point, two point three from the consent agenda.
To be voted on separately.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so does anyone have any questions, comments about the consent agenda? Look at Liz, all those presentations. They've been handy, girl. No questions. All right, so all in favor? Oh wait, I don't think we got a second on that. Okay, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
The agenda minus ten point, two point three. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We need to move the warrants in separately.
Okay. Someone want to make a motion?
I move to approve ten point, two point three ratification of warrant register.
All in favor? Rose abstain? All right. All right, comments from the public on action items. Same spiel, we'll open it up for a couple minutes, four minutes.
Okay, I don't see any, any comments in the chat. I think we can close it down.
Okay. All right, business services. Chris, this is you. Do we have any questions, comments for Chris on item twelve point one?
This is, this is just the standard perfunctory. Every year we ask the board to authorize six signers for the fiscal year. Twenty, two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two.
Isn't it you and? Isn't it usually you and Matthew?
It's the superintendent and myself, yes. In this case, it's Matthew.
Yes. Well, I said Matthew and then I changed it, sorry.
I move to approve resolution twenty-one, twenty-two dash oh one.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, comments from the public on discussion slash information items. We'll leave the chat open for another minute. If anyone has any comments on these items.
Okay, I'm not seeing any, any comments in the chat. I think we can close it down.
Okay, so this is Jason. Item fourteen point one.
And so we had, we've received no complaints during this period. That was tough.
In your first two weeks. All right. Fourteen point two, Ed Services, that you, Tony, first reading of the new course proposal. See, you want to have questions or comment? I, you know, I just realized this is T S P, because I thought we already had, we already have this course, right, for Gen Ed?
Correct, this is for the South County Consortium.
Okay, all right.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Ama.
Cool. And it looks like it's the same for fourteen point, two point two, Math one B.
Correct.
So you want to have any questions or comments for Tony on that? Anyone have any questions or comments for Tony on that? Okay, item fourteen point two point three, the LCAT for live oak charter. This is also you, Tony, if you have anything you want to share about this.
I think we just need to accept it.
Okay, yeah, I think this is, we don't have to take any action, right? Okay. Fourteen point two point four. This is what Matthew, I think you were referring to earlier.
Yes. First read of the new independent, independent study. I meant, you know, amended. With Assembly vote one thirty.
I was, I didn't, I was curious about the required synchronous. Instruction, you know, for for high school. I think it was weekly or something like that. I was just curious, how does it compare to what normal independent study requires?
So for high school?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm not quite sure how Petaluma City School does independent studies. But I know they have short term independent study for students. This is a lot more robust in regards to the the quantity and quality of the instruction. So they are on a weekly synchronous instruction, but they also have a lot of asynchronous. Time, independent time to do their work. That needs to meet the minimum requirements for the minutes and as well as the rigor of the course itself. So, you know, typically the traditional independent studies will be short term. That allows them to to complete their work because they have to travel or they. Or broke a leg or they can't come to school for various reasons. But this will be, you know, for the year and it will need to meet the requirements. And be in all the classes that they're supposed to be in, like they would be in in school.
Thanks, Tony.
Sounds good.
Yeah, and so just, just to add on, just to add on, I mean, I think if we have students who choose this option and they're in. You know, higher level or AP class, we're going to have to figure out a way to, how do we, how do we serve the students? And so that's something that we're, we've been contemplating as well. It's not going to be, it's really going to depend upon. How many students choose this option, where they're at, what we, how we, what we need to, how we need to serve students.
You know, when my daughter was at Valley Oaks, she was given the option. To stay in her AP class and I don't know if that would work for students that are opting for independent study. But would they be able to have that option to say, yeah, you know, we want to be able to take this AP class, but we don't want to be. In, you know, classes every day, all day. It was, would that be possible? It really worked well for her, you know, so.
She, she, all students need to have access to all the courses that we offer on independent study. So we would need to find a way to provide them that opportunity, whether it's through. Like we have a genuity that could, that meets the state state criterias for for the. Course based instruction and 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 I think they do offer like AP courses that we would offer. So there are options that we can look at to make sure that they have access to those AP courses or high level courses. If they choose to go to the independent study route. But in definite, you know, but no, the law is clear that we need to make sure we can provide them the the same opportunities as if they were in school.
But I think the question, Ellen, right, if if someone says, I do, I'm, I'm okay going to take one class per week. I mean, part of why you would, a family would say, we, we, we just can't go in person. Would be because typically because of a medical reason, right? So going into one class versus five or six. I'm not sure if if we have a family who would, who would do that, but I guess it's, it's possible. Maybe particularly everywhere in like an outdoor class, you know, but. Yeah, to what Tony, you know, to what Tony said, we're, we're going to make sure that, you know, students have access and and it's. It's good, we're going to have to figure out how to, how to do that with the survey, so.
Thank you.
And this is, um, parents who are often out of in person. Because of medical reasons or just in general?
They don't have to have a reason, dude. I mean, it's personal.
I thought it was a health reason, at least initially.
I think.
As determined by the parent, so.
Oh, okay, so they have to state that they're, they have like, they're medically concerned for their child to return to in person classes. Okay.
It's not like they need a doctor's note or anything, it's.
It's very relaxed. You know, parent, parent discretion gives a lot of parent discretion for this year.
All right, thank you guys. Oh my gosh, this is just never ending. Okay, so future business, this is like a paragraph, starting to do a paragraph down here. And I know Sheldon wanted to. Add the forum, which I think is very important.
To include feeder districts.
I know, I think the students, the student forum that he was talking about.
Yeah.
For PCS, so if we could add that, did you have something else, Sheldon?
Yeah, I I wanted to follow up on Linda Judas' comment. Because it was something that the board actually was investigating prior to the pandemic. It kind of got sidelined. I I think we do need to return to that question because frankly, I think it's inevitable that we'd be heading that way. With district elections, so I think it's worth, you know, getting in front of this and and start, you know. Getting somebody who can help us think through. What the process looks like and, you know, where the boundaries would be and, you know, all that kind of scheduling.
And so.
I had a long conversation with Gary about this. And we were talking about doing it, I guess, starting at the year of the of COVID. And of course, obviously, or the two years of COVID. But it's, it, it, what it entails is hiring like a consultant. To figure out the different districts of in our community and then. You know, I, I don't, and then taking it from there. So it it would be. He said, what they suggested was that we do it. Like if we were going to do it now to happen in twenty twenty two, we'd have to start yesterday.
Yeah.
Because it's a process.
So Ellen, before, before, just before Gary left, one of the last presents he gave me, right, was. A meeting, a meeting with the consultant that you're all talking about. And so we have, I I've, you know, met recently with this person and. The ideas for the next board meeting, we've tentatively, tentatively scheduled some time. With that person to have, start having some, some of these conversations. And so I necessarily have an easy going future business, it's, it is in the works for the, for the next board meeting, so.
Yeah, that'd be good, I, because I was looking at the grand jury statement and there was like something in there about that, so I'm just like, how?
We're trying to do it before we get sued. Yep. I would like to, I know the SCL and Art's presentation is on future business. And I would like to request that to be at the first board meeting in October. So I can get in touch with Elizabeth and give her a date, a specific date. Would that work? So that's two months from now.
Yeah, so. You're thinking about October twelfth?
Yes.
And I know that the August is probably pretty in depth because it's also like a one meeting in that month. But I would love an update on Diversify Our Narrative and the surveys, how the surveys are going. The curriculum, teacher libraries.
I just don't know.
That's enough time, I don't know if that's enough.
I don't, I don't know if that's enough time because that, what that would, what that would entail is getting the committee together. And that next meeting, the next meeting in August is the first day of school. So I'm not sure if that'll be, I mean, enough time for, it's maybe enough time for Tony to pull together a committee. A K twelve curriculum committee.
So I just don't want us to keep putting this off. It's like, it's twenty twenty one, like what? How white is our curriculum? How straight is our curriculum, like? How myopic is it?
Matthew, is, isn't there a meeting already set up for the people from Diversify Our Narrative with Liz and?
Yeah, but we've been having meetings, they've even come to K twelve, like, when are we actually going to do something? I would just like to see some movement forward because the kids have been asking, like Sheldon was saying, all those forums. Even like these surveys, you know, the youth, the youth truth, like all those. Or the kids like don't feel represented, they don't feel heard.
Yeah, I think.
So it's like, we have to start moving forward, we can't keep putting it off. I just would like to see some type of momentum, maybe every other meeting, like where, because I think it should have been already been done, but. I understand the pandemic, we just can't keep putting it off.
They want to work with some teachers is what they want, which I think.
Exactly, which is why we need to get a committee together and bring students and then we can have, kind of give an update of where where they're at.
I don't understand why I have to take a committee, like, can a teacher like supplement the material? Like.
Teacher could.
Working with these teachers, like, hey, let me see your. What's it called? What'd you get on the first day of school? What do you pass out? Yeah, syllabus. Like, let me see your syllabus. At least there were those teachers there.
We actually still don't really know what's being taught in English and social studies classes.
And because I know it can be changed, like when I was at Kappa Muir, they're like, hey, Joanna, should I teach Roll with Thunder, Hear My Cry? I'm like, yeah. I mean, and they did. I don't know, I'm getting impatient about it just because I don't, it feels like there's resistance. And it just doesn't seem like it should be, maybe do they need professional development? Do they not know how to teach? Like, I don't know, it's literature. I don't know, we have to, maybe at the same time that we're looking at this, like, provide professional development as well.
Speaking as a retired teacher and a retired English teacher. I, I know there's resistance because you're asking people to change their curriculum. And that, for me, I mean, I, I change my curriculum every year because I get bored easily. But for some teachers, it's the same thing and asking them to change, there's going to be resistance.
Well, I don't know if that's the case, I just, I would like to at least know if if it is. It might not be, just kind of want to know like what the roadblocks are. Sorry, Jason, cut you off.
No, no problem, but I just, I wanted to jump in on what you were saying, Joanna. I, I think when, when we were listening to some of the presentations from Diversify Our Narrative. And some of the teachers that were there, I think there are a lot of, I think we'd probably be surprised how many teachers are doing what you're saying. Like, a lot of the teachers that I was talking to were like, oh yeah, I do those books and I do, so there's a lot of that. I think the other piece that's missing is, is it consistent across the board? Like, we don't want students to, like, they got one teacher and they get, and they get some diverse, some diverse curriculum and another teacher, they don't. We want some, some sort of uniformity in terms of like making sure that that's across the board. And I think that's where the, a committee will help to get some agreements about, here's what we're all agreeing to. But I think what you're saying, I think a lot of teachers already have added a lot of these materials, like the list that the students were sharing. They were seeing that a lot of that is in the curriculum in many of the classrooms.
I think Diversify Our Narrative probably wouldn't still be knocking down our doors if that were true. I mean, I don't know. I I would hope that that's the case.
I think they want to see. They want, like what Jason's saying, they want diversified curriculum. They're not saying that all, no teachers teach anything but white, white, white. But I think that they, what they want to see is what Jason was saying is kind of something like stand more. More standardized so that they know that no matter which freshman English teacher you have, you're going to get this array. And so that's where I think the committee comes in, is making those agreements.
And what I, what I heard from the Diversify, Diversify Our Narrative, the students that came and spoke. And when they just emailed us recently was to say, here, I did an introduction with. Our new, you know, new Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services and our Director of Educational Services, Esmeralda and Tony. And said, you know, here, you're next, what they're really asking for is they would like to have an audience, they'd like to bring their ideas. To the K twelve curriculum committee, so. That would be, I mean, I think that's really.
Been there, they've been to the K twelve, that's why I'm like, what next? They gotta, I mean, I don't know. I don't know, I just, it just feels like we're stuck. That's how it feels to me. I feel like that's the perception I'm getting from these students who continue to email myself and Ellen. I, I don't know, Sheldon, if that's what you, I mean, those were Santa Rosa students. I don't know, what would our students say, they're in a forum?
I, I think, I think that I totally understand what you're saying and and think that we have a lot of room to move. I think that we can move pretty quickly at this point. I think like, like the table's been set. And I think that we're poised at, probably not by this first date by August, but. In the very beginning of the year, I think we can make some good progress on this and we shouldn't be waiting around. We shouldn't be having this conversation, you know, next year, like, we should be well on our way, I would think.
Yeah, I agree, yeah. Thank you. Anyone else have anything to add about that or anything else? Future business. I'm in terms of what Sheldon brought up about the forum. Like, how do we explore that in terms of like meetings? Like, I want to give Liz at least one meeting off, so maybe. Next meeting. After like, okay. I don't know, like, give some time to like figure out how we're going to formulate these. The, the students will be up there and all that, maybe set like a target date, maybe in a spring or something.
Although I would rather have it sooner than later because we're starting school. And so it would be nice to hear that at the beginning rather than in the spring.
I don't know if that's enough time, only because we have to like seek out the kids who's willing to disclose. You know, like they were saying, we need to like reengage and. You know, get kids socialized again and feeling comfortable. And I mean, we looking at that. Previous survey we did, like, there's just not a lot of student engagement, so then to ask them to speak out when they don't feel engaged yet. That's why there's a lot of.
Just, there's a lot of changes coming around this fall and a lot of new adjustments. I think it would, I think it'd be wise to do that sometime, I would say late fall or early spring or something like that.
Yeah.
To get a pulse.
All right, I'm done talking, who else?
You know, and one, one thing about the student forum, if we do it in the late fall, early spring, is to kind of find out. If what, what we've been trying to do, like having that first week as welcome week, if that worked. Or if there's still some things that they see. Need to be done, or if there's still huge glaring issues out there.
Might try something different too, you know, one, one of the things that I was worried about with SCO's approach to it is. It's just like six kids. And so I, you know, one thing that I had in my mind is I wonder if we can just facilitate. You know, decentralized focus groups of sorts, you know, at campuses. And so that would get a broader feedback. Just, just something to think about, but that, that would be, you know, something that we discuss as we plan.
Yeah, no, I like that, okay, I lied, I'm not done talking. I like that idea. And I know previously you had mentioned Sheldon had brought up bringing office hours back, even if it was some kind of like. Maybe two of us sit with a couple students at a time, just like a mini and then maybe do a bigger one.
Yeah, yeah, when we, when we start our governance thing this Saturday, I want to talk about that. Bring that up, about office hours, outreach, that kind of thing.
Is that it? We adjourned? Okay. Ellen's like, look, bang your hands. All right, we are adjourned, I will see some of y'all on Saturday. Thank you all so much for all your work.